Brown, what you did. Think somebody tells you to come up in front of all these people in front of this board and do what you did. And you know what? This is what I'm gonna ask all of you. Come back for the next meeting. Hold up the calendar. Alright?
And they will. That's alright. And they will hold your calendar. So you all have the list about the 3.7? 3.7? Okay.
3.78.
3.78. So you all have the list exactly what was in the budget that was paid, blah, 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 blah. And is that affordable? Can I hold it? Because I can't read, I can't count on what's inside the paper. Is that public knowledge or is it still under investigation?
So, if you tell me. I, I need to better understand.
I want the list that how they arrived at the 3.7 and the years. Who was in charge and what was going on? I'd like to see that list.
Okay. So, a couple of things. This matter is still under legal counsel. Completely under legal counsel.
So it's not...
It is under legal counsel.
Okay, so I can't hold it, attorney?
No.
Not yet, it's still under investigation now.
Right. And it's, if you look in the, if you look at the budget presentation, a lot of that was, was broken down. And again, it was practices.
Okay.
Right? So we're not looking at specifically what was or wasn't paid. It was practices of carrying over, moving, putting things on. But, but check that out. I think that's gonna answer a lot of your questions if you look at that meeting video.
Do you know the name of the state auditor that's coming into Overwatch District to make sure that they are going to make that everything's accountable? Do you know who the state auditor that's coming in as of July 1st?
I've got official words in writing, but unofficially I've been told it's, um, you. Um, you can...
Oh, Tom. Okay. Um, I'm sorry. I know a lot of people say, okay. Um, now, here's another question. I understand you laid off a lot of people and people are out of jobs and you're all upset and I would feel the same way. I wanna know, how much is the total amount of money that you saved in laying off all these people? And what is your total budget?
Forty two million.
Okay, forty two million dollar budget. How much, which will stay the same, I'm assuming? But you laid off a lot of people. What does that dollar amount come to for the people that you laid off?
So, to tell you that I have a dollar amount on the top of my head, or anyone else does?
Well, this is administration.
Well, but let me just, I just wanna give you some other figures first, okay? We had, um, it was just under 2.5%. So it was roughly a total of 10 people who belonged to one of the association groups, right?
Oh, I don't wanna know the people.
No, no, no. I know you know, but I'm, I'm just giving you a figure, right? So you had multiple administrators, some of which returned to the classroom. But in total, it was, out of the LEA and Supervise Association, there were 10 personnel that were not renewed. That was, that was the total. In addition, we consolidated and, and audited our needs with our part-time custodians as well as our aides. And in that audit, we determined that we had an excess of aides. And that we could not only remain compliant, but we could be above compliance if we lowered that amount, thus saving the district's money. In addition, we went from 25 part-time custodians down to three part-time custodians. But then we created three full-time custodian jobs. So in doing that, we became much more able to keep these schools not only clean, but covered through the weekends as well. So while there is certainly a dollar amount, and you can see from, you know, seconds, uh, sorry, salaries from one year salaries to another year, I just wanted to put into context for you, El, um, Elaine, because I know you haven't been here, what we are actually talking about. And, and those are, those are the numbers that person L were talking about.
Right.
I know, I know you want to...
I want the total amount of money. Did you wind up saving 2 million? Did you save 3.6 million? Did you only save 1 million in doing all these cuts? I wanna know the answer.
I'm, I'm sure it's over a million, Chris. You have, you always have the numbers with you.
Well, because if you cut only 1 million dollars...
It's over, it's over a million dollars. And our budget, our budget was sent to the county and it was approved by the county.
It was approved?
Next year, yeah.
Okay, so you cut 2 million, you're still 2 million short almost.
We, we presented for next year. You'll see in the, in the video. We presented not only a balanced budget, but a budget that has allocations, I believe about 700,000 plus, compared to start returning to the deficit. So we are fully funding everything that we have planned for next year. We have full salaries, full everything. And in fact, we have residual money for that payback. Again, the county, as you can imagine, looked at this with a fine-tooth comb. And they were extremely impressed with it.
Okay.
And we, we, we did not have any, um, you know, we had, we had some back and forth. But, and I can only speak for next year's budget. That's what we presented, that's what was approved.
Well, they approved the other ones and the short 3.7, so I don't think they'd be too trustworthy.
I think, I think you can imagine that with the state monitor coming in, since they are our first go-to, they were going to be extremely certain that this year's budget met the criteria because they know a state monitor is going to be coming in and looking at it with their signature on it. So I think that, that raised the level of examination.
So how come, so how come the school board did, um, short-term loan or whatever, like they did back in 1994 when they were short money? And without raising the taxes over a long period, long period of time? Without having to lay off the people who's busy to make sure it does run efficiently? Because even if you cut, who you cut, you still cut supervisors, you still cut things that impacted the children's education. So why couldn't you spend or, or borrow money like they did back in 1994?
2% cap right now.
Doesn't matter. Debt service goes on the outside of the budget, doesn't matter.
Right, but we're, but, but think about this now. We're going on a, a, with the district is going on a 10-year, um, interest-free loan with the state for the amount that's been identified now. If we were to, we, we don't, we couldn't now, Elaine, put forward a budget for next year that went over the amount of money that we have and say, "We're gonna need to borrow more because we, 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 we still need these people." We would've loved to, but it's about sustainability now. That's, that's where we are. What can we sustain? Now, the hope is that, the, the, the true hope here, right? At least certainly my hope, is that a state monitor comes in and finds strategies or puts forward strategies and puts it to motion because he or she will have that authority, right? They, they won't say how the money is spent or how it's run, right? And it is my hope, and I think the board's hope, that with their expertise, they're going to come in and find many other ways of cutting money. And as we find other ways of cutting money, not only will that knock down the deficit moving forward, but it will create openings in the next budget to start funding for these positions to come back.
And...
That's the goal.
And did you cut any principals?
No, no principals.
Well, first of all, when a state comes in, they're gonna save one principal for 700 kids. You don't need to have five principals.
They, they, they potentially can, and of course, they're going to take into account the facility structure and the fact that we're running nine facilities. And, you know, I, I just wanna point out with school safety and security at the forefront of everything right now, and rightfully so, it's about time. With that being at the forefront, we already have some principals that are operating two and three locations, ensuring the safety of those students. So you were right, in our new structure, we're going to have buildings housing more students and we will still be able to function under one principal in there. Right now, we have some buildings that are very, that are very small. But the idea of those buildings being without a principal, who is the, the, the person responsible for the safety and security given these times right now, that, 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 that was certainly not a consideration or recommendation that was wanted to be...
Well, the auditor that said that everything was fine, do you guys intend to like sue this auditor who didn't catch this?
Under, it's, it's, he's, he's no longer with us, but again, everything's under legal counsel.
That's all the legal counsel. Okay. And by the way, has everybody attended their ethics classes to make sure you know the ethics laws? I love the data, but I just went to all their classes. Okay. I also wanna know, um, did new superintendent that was hired? Because like, you know, the stuff with like my friend, whatever. I hope that nobody knew this superintendent. He's not related to anybody or friends with anybody. The new superintendent, Anthony Breckow, is a resident of Dillon Park, has no ties to Lynn Hurst. I served as chair of the, of the committee. And I assure you that there are no political ties to Lynn Hurst or family ties. Okay, but you know that politics has to stop in this town because it is ruining this town. I know everybody thinks that you just do what they want and, you know, when they don't wanna buy by what they have to. But you know what? You all need to be held accountable to do what you're elected to do and not have your personal agenda. Now, one other thing.
I went down to McKeever, the lawyer, the law firm in Cranford, Georgia. Soroka McKeever. And I picked up this big white binder. And in that white binder, it had every single person that wanted the job, the resumes, all the way through. And Susan had, we had the committee. And I went through there. Superintendent, prior experience, going all the way through. And I called to get them in to meet us as pre-Lynn Hurst. And then the four of us narrowed it down and everybody interviewed the final candidates.
Okay, you know I sat there one time.
Yes, and you were there at the beginning. And you, and, and... And we went by what you said, what you guys wanted in the public. And, and that was the criteria, the face time.
Right, because you gotta make this town go forward like Shaun said. Because if you don't, you're, more people, they move that in.
Yeah, but Susan's absolutely right that, I mean, that's what, we went through the whole process. And all the people was 14?
We interviewed 14.
14 and two?
Two for each.
Eighty three.
Okay. Actually, Elaine, we had three, three candidates that came for the final interviews and running the entire board. One was better than the other. And I assure you that although Shaun has big shoes to fill, Anthony Breckow has had an impeccable, impeccable resume. And he moved everyone away when he came for his final interview with the entire board. There wasn't one board member who had a doubt. Okay. Um, one last thing. I know that shared services was let go a while ago. And, um, you know, there was like, you know, town and the school board, which is never been popping for shared services. We still have shared services. What is supposed to be between other districts and other counties, save money, not spend money. That's what you guys seem to not, not understand and the town don't understand, is save money. Well, I wanna know, what are you still doing with your pool? You still have shared services with the pool? Elaine, we have Scott Bysak here. Scott Bysak is a watchdog. You're good, you're a good guy?
Yes.
Let's get talking about, maybe, I can't say that properly. But, um, you're talking about squeezing the last drop out of the penny? That's Scott. Thank you. You and I will get him on real good. Oh, yeah. You know, you know I know my stuff. Okay, so I just wanna make sure that everything is moving forward and I will be back. It's my first situation is over. And school board goes, my four days I'm in here, served two times. And no board stuff inside now. I will be watching.
Personally, Elaine, cover a few things that I would like to cover myself. But first of all, I'd like to start out by saying that there is no place for politics in education. And I think that, um, that has been proven with the deficit that we have, thanks to whoever would like to blame that, which is apparently no one. Um, now, one cutback that has been made is to, basically has been to benefit any of the children of this town. I know it's kinda hard to benefit children when you're cutting things from their curriculum and schools and everything else. Um, I would just like to know, with all the big slips that were handed out and all firing and rehiring, is there a process where a teacher or aide gets that job and then they are supposed to re-interview to be hired back?
The legal counsel can speak more on, on this, but we do have the ability to, if a person is working for us one year and we're looking for them in a different position for the following year, we have the ability to appoint them to that, to that position, which was exactly what, what we did. So we indeed let everyone know who was non-tenured or part-time that their job for the following year could not be guaranteed. And we let them know that in late April. But then, once we knew what jobs after the May 7 budget was, um, the budget hearing and the board approved, what the county approved, we were ready then to fill those jobs. And at that time, we were able to take teachers and people who were already serving in our district and appoint them to those positions. And that was done through the recommendations of the administration, of course.
So there was how re-interviewing whatsoever?
It's not, it's, the interview, the interview was not necessary. If a teacher who was let go, for example, was a third grade teacher last year, roughly speaking, and now we, we let that teacher go. And now we're seeing our budget get passed and we see all our vacancies for the following year. And we see a kindergarten position. And the administrator and the evaluators of that person thinks that that person's an excellent person for a kindergarten position. We can simply appoint them to kindergarten because they have their certificate. So once someone is hired in public education in a district, they can teach anywhere within the realm of their certification. And that was exactly what we did. Now, that also created some challenges for us when we had tenured teachers who needed to be placed in other positions because that, that caused that bump out effect. Um, so, so that's where the, the interview is not necessary. For any vacancy or any person who was not renewed for the sake of perhaps seeking a different type of candidate or seeking a different type of qualification for that position, those people were not reappointed and those positions were left out to be posted. They're not posted now because it's only right that I deserve that and respect that to the new superintendent.
So my other question is cutbacks. Um, just mind, then there'll be cutbacks made in the sports programs, which there was zero. We hired new coaches somehow. And my other question is, we're firing, we fired all these amazing teachers, aides, supervisors, if you will, and we're busing children to their schools when they can see them from their front steps. Why, why can't we cut back in, in an area like that where...
So I wanna...
I can bus one child and I don't have, I, I don't have the option to bus the other. Yet I can see both schools from my house. It's a huge expense.
And, and I do understand the lens through which you look. We do have students who, being their IEP needs, receive and are entitled to bus transportation.
I'm very aware of that. My son has a speech training and he's gonna have to be bused because he has a little bit of a list.
And, and I, and I, and I will tell you that that was a practice, and the board can speak more upon this. That was a practice that was blanketed throughout. And once this was identified, every IEP meeting that is taking place is reevaluating into transportation. And that is a conversation that is active and we have already, maybe Mr. Bysak can speak on it, but we have already cut transportation costs for, for exactly that reason. However, we need to wait until that evaluation time comes up. So we can't just eliminate that across the board to assume that we don't think we need it. We need to wait for their IEP. So next year, we'll see an even bigger savings there. But that is something that indeed we see and that we address.
I think it's a standard that we got a great amount of amazing teachers and aides, like I said, and the children aren't the only people that lives out here. And I think you guys need to get your act together, to be perfectly honest with you all, so thank you.
Just wanna say, Shaun, I know you're a long time, but with your voice, you go through football and baseball. So, so good luck. So most of my questions won't even involve you because I'm, I'm looking now, what is done is done. So I have questions probably for different committee members on the future. Um, who was on the facilities committee? Finance and facility, they're together.
That's Chris.
Really? All right, finance and facility together. Doesn't sound like it should be, but, oh, here. So Chris, um, question. The 19 million dollars that was funded through the vote, uh, for changes to the schools, you know, improvements which are necessary, we all know that. What happens if there's a change order because, uh, let's say the air conditioning that was gonna be, or the heating element closed the school was going to be one million, now it's a 10% change order. Where's that money gonna come from? Yes? Well, John, we're willing, we're willing, let's, let's, let's be honest. Perfect world, so leave, they're not 10%, they're 5%. So let's say it's 19 million. 5% of 19 million is... What's that? 200? All right, so now, okay, on that note, then the finance committee will be allowed to, the facility committee to stand up. Okay, that's gonna be, good luck, but we hope so, as we all know.
You have, you have two committees. You have a refereeing committee and a finance committee. The refereeing committee is that all refereeing meetings, review what's going on in meetings. And then, in the financials, it has our finance group to review this year's kind of agenda. We go to the referee, to act the state of scale it down. A big number of people in there.
And we all hope so, and we hope the work's done in the process, of course. But you have to be prepared. These things happen, especially when work can be done sometimes during the year. Work has to be done on spring break, Christmas break, summer, because of facilities that we can use.
Right, all that was put into the refereeing bid going up, so all the vendors that apply, so, we are roughly 7% going for the teams.
Okay, 7%, that's good. Okay, that's... On that question now, does the state have any input on that when they come into monitoring? Or is that a separate item?
It's a separate item.
Okay, well, no, once again, now let's say something goes to the state, that's one of my other questions. You know now, the state's gonna come in, something's gonna come up, it goes to them. Is that, well, time goes, like a month, they review, they come back, and they have a bidding process, any kind of service agreement. Let's be honest, we all know how the state operates, and then it has to go through the county.
Are you talking about...
No, I'm talking about the standard, everyday operation.
The operating budget moving forward, we will have the state monitor assigned to it, so anything that is... Any questions, the state monitor can do it. Bring up the finance committee, make a recommendation.
Okay, because we, yeah, we know how, that can be, right? They come in September, make a, you know, a recommendation, you guys meet in October. It's back to them in November, turn around in December. I'm just saying, let's be honest. We know how the work's...
That's right, but the state monitor early July.
Say it again.
State monitor early July.
Okay, I'm just... So each, each, this committee member or each committee chair really has to be on, ready to go.
The bottom line is the state monitor and the final state server, all finances, they'll write on everything.
Will the work with the committee chairs do all those different things, you know? I mean...
We'll still find out.
Okay. It's also fair, okay. Uh, I've been just curious, but now that's probably new, this next question is, since the, the state auditor, whether his title's gonna be, um, I was just wondering if the finance committee's been set up a, a little committee of their own, see about cost-cutting measures. I know the budget's into this year, to look as the year goes on, they put in like a 1.5, 2% each department, see if they can say 20 for the 2019, 2020. Is, is there something in place for that? Or, because I'm here, I'm looking at whatever happens at, let's see what we can do in the future. Well, I'm looking at 1920 now.
So, moving forward, Chris, if you're optimistic, you're obviously be watching and obviously keep trying how they go. And then, budget prep starts in January.
Start budget prepping in January, is when we will start going through the entire budget again. Line by line, as we did this year, as we practiced. We continue to do that practice. And I assure the public, who is over there, that I would stay with my emotion, we should be in the deficit again. Well, you, you being, uh, had a curve that you had to do this time, prepared for 1920. You know, sometimes something comes along, you end it up, or something you can save.
Well, yes, yes, yes.
Come on, when it's 42 million dollars, sometimes the work's out. Sometimes it doesn't, sometimes you're still sure. Who is the liaison for this district auditor, anybody? The state monitors, if there's, they're a liaison on the board here?
Yes.
Just the A, no, no, you're a member?
Yeah, in many situations, I mean, the, the state monitor will be a daily presence. He will be part of the district administration. So, um, if you, you know, look at other districts that have state monitors and check out their videos, in most situations, the state monitor is present at, at the board meetings as well. Unless he or she feels that, you know, nothing is happening that night that affects it. But what I do wanna point out to Mr. Bumble is, um, because this is, you know, new, new territory for, for us. Um, a state monitor is going to be sent by the DOE with the expectation of identifying how a district can cut its, its spending. So he or she is going to be evaluated as doing a better job by being able to identify greater cuts, right? So, so they're going to come in that way. The, the workability with the board is going to be in how those cuts are identified. And, and the hope is that he will understand, acknowledge what's important to this board. Because unfortunately, unfortunately, cuts are often identified quickly in outsourcing, in reducing benefit costs to districts, et cetera. So the hope of this board was to create a budget that reflected its values, which showed us keeping as many people and not outsourcing any huge group, um, and hoping that the monitor will continue for this board to support those values.
Yep, exactly. Hopefully one thing that gets the other. He comes in, sees you, sees you guys work, you know, have what you have in place. Right. Again, you know, this, he or she comes in, and as you say, could see something, say, "Well, like, we cut this, you cut that." But, as a group, you may say, "We grab it, go back, and we find something else." And that's gonna be the game for you, shit, that you have to play. And I started on the floor. That's, that's, that can be good, but that can be unfortunate. For example, I, I, again, as everybody has applauded, the kids here today, hopefully... Good luck, Scott. Well, yeah, of course, because you, you guys have your committees, you're still gonna operate... Well, yeah, of course, 'cause you, you guys have your committees, you're still gonna operate as a board meeting committee, and doing your diligence between that, playing your role.
Our new superintendent has already gone through this, this district he came from, so he's got a lot of experience with the monitor.
That could be helpful. You probably, you probably wish they had, but it's not this year. Almost there. Uh, what about Park? Is Park off the table for next year? You're in, I'm curious. I, I was hoping Rashawn, you're not gonna be here, somebody else will be here, but I, I know.
Park has been, uh, we, we, our active commissioner has now become the commissioner of, of education, um, being a member of the legislative committee since this point, and, and being very involved with, um, concerns over the, the new Q-SAT requirements and being active down in Trenton. Um, I've had the luxury of being able to not only represent Linder's there, but to bring information back. Um, I can just share with you to, to point that, um, Park is quote-unquote "going away", and they are currently at the state level holding, um, input sessions, some of our administrators have gone to it, in the hopes of identifying what the next standardized assessment is going to be. Now, under federal law, and it's federal law, we have to have a standardized assessment. So the, the question of Park going away and thinking eighteen, nineteen, and knowing something has to replace it, and that's right around the corner, it, you know, we, we don't know what next year holds, but for certain, these, um, these talks and this dialogue that's ongoing is in the hopes of creating something that, um, is more suitable to assessing student standards in multiple ways.
As Elaine, not being in education, though for the last five years I've had this part-time job and working at school, and unfortunately, seeing what Park tests entails, just materials, time, changes. Um, I don't know who to blame in Trenton, but, oh my God. Flying out the window with this lightning, saying, "God." But anyway, if you say it, ask me some other times, asking, hopefully they come up with a program. You know, seeing him demand, I didn't realize, oh, Chris, you're banning. Is that an issue with alternate route that the state has put on, somebody new, uh, yes, requirements for people to alternate route, they have charter funding people, teach music, or teach art programs where a lot of people come out and go to college for art and music, but they don't go as an education group, and they come out later. Is that, is that going on here too? I, I, I just hear from talking, you realize that's an issue with alternate route.
So, I mean, I don't think alternate route's an issue. I think what, what they've done is they've actually increased the requirements for anyone who goes alternate route at this point, and it's, it's really not even, they're not really using that term. They still use them parenthetically, um, but, but certainly, it's just the type of certification that, that you get as C S or, uh, you know, um, or a different level. Um, I think that the issue is that, or one of the struggles that districts are facing is that, um, the state has come out with a vision of what they want in their schools. But the vision, for example, this dance instructor, this dance certification, it requires like a full college study of dance. It's not a situation whereby a local dance teacher can go alternate route, or use that term, and earn the ability to teach in a public school, and, and that's what's kind of holding us up. Um, and to Elaine's point earlier, that's one area that we're working closely with the towns in, in South Bergen to identify one teacher that is certified that we can potentially share because it doesn't have to be an all-year program, it can be a market period, or one day a week, et cetera. Um, but, but there are, there are challenges when, um, when, when the...
They're not horrible treaties, Nancy.
Exactly. The, 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 the management is greater than the need.
All right, I think that's it. Let's scribble, uh, the, all right, thank you, good luck. Again, thank you, good luck. Thank you, Mark. Karen? And Wardley? Governor?
Hi, I wanna start out by saying thank you so much for everything you've done for us, Rashawn. I truly admire you. I think you've created a lot of great programs. And my grandson, Tyler, as you all know, has flourished from those programs. He came in to Linder's High School when no one else wanted to educate him, and he had been sitting home for five years, and he walked into the lighthouse program, and he is the mayor of Linder's High School, and that is all thanks to everyone here at Linder's High. I'm just a little concerned, because as you said, Ron, Elaine's rumors, you do have to ask right away. I'm hearing that the lighthouse is going to be changing like completely, and that the six oh one Riverside building will be pre-K and no longer in the lighthouse program. So that's one question.
Just to repeat, there, there is no truth to that. If anything, we are having more students from out of district interested in our life skills program because so few, um, districts offer it. So it's actually working not only in the advantage of students, but in our advantage because that's the constitution rather be for us. Um, but it is certainly, it is certainly staying in, in my hope, you know, and continuing to grow.
Great, because I have been advertising it. I'm a, a big fan of the program. Well, that brings me to my next question. Tyler is losing a case manager, he's losing the most amazing teacher, Ms. Roddy, he is losing two aides in the classroom. That's a lot of change for one child with special needs, not to mention the other six or seven that are in that classroom.